I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. The records show that all members of the city council are present this evening with the exception of Councilman Kerr. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room. It's on the west wall and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is council reorganization, election of the council president. Mr. Claybaugh?
I'm going to step down as council president, and I would like to nominate Mike McLean.
Second.
Then moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Fairbanks, that we nominate Mike McLean as president of the city council. Are there any other nominations from the floor? All right, gentlemen. I'm just going to have a hand vote, if that's agreeable with everybody. All in favor, raise your hand. Mike, you're not in favor of this? Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That is approved, seven zero. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a councilman requests. First item is item A, approve agenda as submitted. B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on January 3, 2022, as on file in the city clerk's office. E, approval of treasurer's report of claims. E1, approval of Gage County area growth and gauge claim in the amount of $32,413.77. E2, approval of balance of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $641,578.26. F, approval of Boswa reported claims in the amount of $75,203.71. G, approval of ambulance write-off bad debts. H, termination of Beatrice Plus funding request in the amount of $5,222.50 to the Beatrice On The Move Coalition for city trail improvement projects, approved April 9, 2019, as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. I, approval of Beatrice Plus funding request in the amount of $5,000 to stake your claim foundation for the installation of multiple bike repair stations and signage along the city's trail system as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. J, resolution number 6834 granting permission to Julie Fisher doing business as Julie's Hot Dogs to sell goods upon city property. K, resolution number 6835 granting Nick Jurgens and his designees permission to offer for sale food items upon the right-of-way along Fourth Street between Court Street and Ella Street immediately adjacent to his building located at 400 Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item I, resolution number 6836 granting permission to Tracy Hartley doing business as Snow Cone Zone to sell or offer for sale or peddle goods, wares or merchandise upon the public parking lot at Hannibal Park and the Scott Street ballfields. And item M, resolution number 6837 granting Stone Hollow Brewing Company and their designees permission to offer for sale food items upon city property, including city right-of-way along Third Street between Court Street and Market Street. Is there any item that any council member wants removed from the consent agenda? Rick?
I need to abstain from E1, please.
Okay, so noted. Anyone else want anything removed? All right.
I move that item listed under the consent agenda-
Mr. McLean?
It's not your job anymore.
Oh, I'm done. Done, done already tonight.
It's hard to give up, isn't it?
It's habit.
I move that the items under the consent agenda be approved except in ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that all items under the consent agenda be approved, and your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. We have no public hearings this evening. First one is resolution, resolution number 6838 executing the revised Exhibit B to the Transmission Substation Service Agreement between the city and Nebraska Public Power District as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
I move that resolution 6838 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that resolution 6838 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
Despite the fact that our agreement with, our purchase power agreement with MPBD has expired, we continue to use their substation transmission lines to be integrated into the electrical grid that's out there. As you can see, we've had this transmission substation agreement for a number of years. We need to amend Exhibit B on it. Previously, it referred back to our wholesale power agreement as to where the price or that we charged, or we were charged by MPBD for subtransmission T services was coming from. Obviously, that agreement no longer exists, and so now Exhibit B says it refers back to MPBD's rate ordinance is where the fee will come from. So that's the only changes. Everything else in the agreement stays the same.
Questions? Yes, Ted?
Have we, are we having difficulty dealing with them since we've left, or is this, it's been still amicable, it's not contentious at all?
No, very good. We have no problems working with them.
And at some point in time, we'll be buying power from them, so.
At least a sliver of it.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions? Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Resolution 6838 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number 6839 executing the marketing services agreement between the city and Omaha Public Power District wherein OPPD agrees to perform energy management services for the city's share of the output from the Cottonwood Wind Project as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
I move that resolution number 6839 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that resolution 6839 be passed and adopted.
As you guys all remember, we have a purchase power agreement with Next Era to buy the offput of 16.1 megawatts of wind energy out of the Cottonwood Wind Farm. It's located out around Hastings. We've had Tenaska be the company that managed that asset for us. They would forecast our wind production the day-ahead market. They were bidding it into the day-ahead market and into the real-time market for us. That agreement came up for renewal, and at that point, John Krasky went out and started looking at some other opportunities. Some other vendors that were out there would provide the same services, and OPPD came back with a proposal that provided the same level of service that Next, or that Tenaska was providing, but substantial savings to the city. And so that's why we're recommending to you that we, we've already given notice to Tenaska, and we're recommending that you now sign the contract to go with OPPD, provide those services. OPPD already provides the same services to another off-taker of the Cottonwood Wind Farm. So they already manage some of that asset and are familiar with that product and how it works, and so they would do the same thing for us.
Rick?
Again, how much are we saving?
In this particular case, you'll save roughly $80,000 to $90,000 per year.
And for the public, how long is the contract for?
This contract is a two-year contract. It automatically renews after those two years, unless either party gives notice. I believe it's 90 days in advance, and I think it has a 3% escalator every two years.
Any other questions? The audience?
Yeah.
And your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Resolution 6839 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number 6840 executing a contract between the city and the University of Nebraska-Lincoln to conduct a study and develop a downtown revitalization plan.
I move that resolution number 6840 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded, or moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck. You know, old habits are hard to break. That 6840 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
Last year, if we recall, we applied for a downtown, or a planning grant to look at the streetscape in the downtown area. We were not awarded that grant. When talking with Main Street, trying to find some other avenues that were out there, Southeast Nebraska Economic Development District, SEND, came forward to us, had this idea. What they partnered with is the University of Nebraska at Lincoln. They'll have some graduate students come down, help put together a plan for our downtown area. The total cost, it's $8,000. SEND is covering $5,000 of that, so our out-of-pocket is $3,000. The students in this graduation class last semester did plans for David City and for Syracuse. We read those plans. They're very similar to what you got from in 2011 and 2016. And so assuming you guys approve this tonight, we'll get in contact with that group. They'll be down in end of January to have open house, get some input from the public. They'll be down again in March to show some of their preliminary findings or observations, and then again, ask for some public input at that time. But that's kind of the plan is what this project would be.
Open house would be where?
Don't know yet. That's yet to be determined.
And will advertise that how?
It'll be advertised, obviously, through our social media, and we'll certainly be in contact with both the radio and the newspaper.
Good. Any other questions, gentlemen, from the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Resolution 6840 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance to convey real estate owned by the city to John A. Haido Jr. and Rita R. Haido.
I move that said ordinance be given number 22-1, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number 22-1, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 22-1 by number the first time, ordinance 22-1 by number the second time, and ordinance number 22-1 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 22-1 be passed and approved.
Second.
By Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance 22-1 be passed and approved.
So this is the property of 323 Court Street that the city's been dealing with for a number of years now. Started in 2018 when the city condemned the property. At that point, we tried working with the property owner to find a resolution. Generally, when the city condemns a property, one of two outcomes occurs. Either the property owner makes improvements to the property, we release the condemnation at that point, or the city proves forth condemnation and demolition. The building also is destroyed, and the property owner then is billed for the outstanding cost. Both of those take quite a bit of time to kind of work through. In this particular case, we tried working with the property owner. That avenue just didn't seem like it was plausible. Tearing down the house, or tearing down the building in this one would have impacted adjoining building, would have left an open hole in the downtown. We estimate cost to be between $200,000 and $250,000 for demolition. It was unlikely we were going to recover money. It was, the property's held in an LLC that only had one asset, and that being the building itself, and had two other liens that would have been in front of the city. So our recovery of the cost would have been probably slim to none. At the same time, the property owner continued ownership of the lot itself, and so we probably would have had ongoing issues with regards to weeds and snow removal and all those other things that kind of just naturally occur when you have an out-of-town property owner at times. And so working with Michael at Main Street and at the help of Terry Doyle, a lot of hours were put in. We finally able to find another solution, and that was getting the property owner to sell the land first to individual out of Lincoln, and then the city bought it from that individual here a couple council meetings ago. And now we're hopefully to bring to you tonight a proposal to sell the property to John or Rita Haido, who would then go through and have plans to revitalize and refurbish that building and bring it back into a useful state, both in a commercial setting and into a residential setting for the upper floors. So both this and the resolution coming up next are to sell the property to the Haidos. Purchase price is $1,000, or excuse me, $1 is the sale price. Many people ask why, but again, by doing this, the city saves between $135,000 and $185,000 from the other options that were available to us.
What's the timeline on the remodeling and?
So sale, since you're selling property, you have to hold it for 21 days. It's remonstrance period. We would look to then transfer them sometime in that middle of February, so around Valentine's Day, and they are working on getting their funding lined up for renovations to start yet this spring and summer.
Okay. How did we do with removing, I saw the U-Hauls there, and I saw the pictures prior. How did, how did they do?
It's not great, but it's better. Those in the city who, so yes, he did remove most everything on the first floor. There are still a number of items, both downstairs and upstairs, that need to be pulled out of there, but the first floor's been remarkably cleaned out, much more than I would have thought.
Well, bonus, it's all yours. Everything you want, you're fine. I was just curious.
Any other questions?
I would have-
From the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance number 22-1 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution, resolution 6841 executing a contract for sale of real estate and all necessary documents to John A. Haido Jr. and Rita R. Haido.
I move that said resolution number 6841 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that resolution 6841 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen? From the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. Resolution 6841 has been passed and adopted. Next item is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum? All right, seeing none, we'll go into discussion and reports. And Ted, this is something that you brought up. Wanted to discuss the adjoining buildings and how the inspections are going. And Rob Marrow, our Community Development Department Director is with us tonight. And so, Rob, thanks for being here.
Yeah, no problem. Good to see you guys again. It's been a while. Yeah, I was asked to give a kind of a brief overview of kind of what's been going on. Took a while to get to going on the whole project in general. Not a lot of response when we sent some letters out and that over the last couple of years. We were determined to get it done here in 2021. Fell a little bit short, but we had a goal of trying to go somewhere between 10 and 15 inspections per month. Hit a little bit of a lull in the summertime just due to staffing vacations and building picking up, inspections picking up for new construction and that. So we, by the end of the year, we were sitting around 85, 86, somewhere in there. Out of 119 adjoining buildings, I believe we identified, 118. Beginning of this year, we've done a few more, so I think right now we're sitting about 92, 94, somewhere in there. So they're going, getting them done, getting them knocked out. I can tell you, it's been a, it's been more positive than I thought, to be honest with you, going into it, the number of buildings that we've looked at. Kind of expected to see maybe worse conditions overall, but generally speaking, it's been, like I said, it's been pretty positive. The buildings in themselves are in pretty good shape. We pretty well see a similar thing in almost every building, specifically with the limestone foundations and the mortar and the basements just wearing away due to moisture. It's, it's in nearly every building. There's a few that haven't. I know there's one building that they told me they ran a dehumidifier, dehumidifier in their basement for 40 years, and it looks pretty pristine there. So our approach in general was maybe not so much coming out and hammering people, but getting a kind of a feel for how they all looked and giving people the opportunity and some advice on what maintenance to try to go after first. And generally speaking, it is those foundations and the walls themselves on the exterior, the repointing that needs to be done on, more so in the interior foundations. The exterior foundations are, exterior walls are generally in pretty good shape. Roofs have been in pretty good shape, pre-storm, anyway. It's probably changed a little bit over the last few weeks. But yeah, we, we've already seen a number of people that have acted on our suggestions. We've had them go in and fix the things we told them to fix. They had it done within a matter of weeks, maybe a few months at the most. We just kind of continue to try to encourage the maintenance of that. A lot of our pitch is that we want them to have the opportunity, you know, the building's not going to fall down today, nothing along those lines. We want them to have the opportunity to get these things maintained on their own. Like I've told many property owners, if we come back in, you know, two to four years, and, you know, things have changed tremendously, we'll have to start doing the notice and orders and forcing that issue a little bit more. So overall, like I said, it's been very, very positive. We've had a lot of good conversations with the downtown owners. People on site, I think, have been more surprised that we weren't just trying to go after them real hard, and that's necessary in some cases. I know we still have a few buildings that we have to inspect, that I'm not as optimistic that we would be having the same conversation in a couple of weeks, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But I'd be happy to take any questions you'll have.
I don't really have, well, I do have some questions, but first of all, thanks. I appreciate it. It's taken a long time to get here for us. I've got some concerns, and I, and first of all, I think you guys are light years from where you were when, before you got here, Rob. I mean, this was a project that this body seemed, you know, sought to pursue, and, you know, you got tasked with that. But I do have some concerns. So looking at the numbers, the last time it was presented here, we had this conversation, it looked to me like we weren't going to have everything done in the timeframe. So, you know, you have to, you know, we're trying to get them inspected every two years. It looks like you won't get them all inspected in that two-year period, and so, you know, it's like a perpetual thing. And my concern is that you're going to fall behind. So that's one of my concerns. And another one of my concerns is, is I think we do a pretty good job when you, you find something that's not up to code or not up to par, and you point it out to them, and they're willing to, to repair it or get it fixed, or they, or you give them a solution and they go, yeah. But my concern is, is the, that segment of it that doesn't want you there. It doesn't want to do what you've asked them to do. And so, so this is what I'm asking you, is how do we expedite it? You know, how do we expedite the inspections? How do we expedite the, dealing with the property owners that don't want you there? And to, and so we protect the adjoining buildings that, and the community at large? And, and how do we, and how does this body get that done through you? I mean, I know you're sitting here in front of your boss, but, because you work for Tobias, but Tobias works for us. So what I want you to tell us is what you need from us. Do you, do you need more money? Do you need more manpower? Do you, what, what is it, you know, do you need a different set? Do you, do you need us to improve the city code? I just want you to tell me what you need, and because it's, this is concerned, there's not a single person that sits on the council that isn't concerned by this. So.
Yeah, man-hours are kind of always an issue for us in general. I mean, if you want certain things done that fast, I mean, that's, that's an issue. That being said, I mean, some of it is planning as well. You know, if we can look at 30 or 40 of these buildings where we don't have to stretch out to four years, and maybe we can do them in two years, where they're more of severe, or maybe potentially the owners that we don't think will do things that we've asked them to do, then I think we could go and just randomly ask for those inspections, and if we have evidence that, or we can't get in there with their approval, and we have evidence that we can get an inspection warrant, we can always go that route. But I think that just staggering them in a way would, is probably, is the approach that I'm planning to take going forward with the ones that, you know, maybe don't kind of grade out as good as others.
So basically classifying the buildings. Now, this is a Class A building. I need to go over four years. It's a B. I need to go three years.
So to speak, yep. Essentially, that's, that's kind of what my thought process is on there, just to try to not have to go through every four years and say, all right, now it's going to take another year to get these 120 done.
Right.
So, and then hopefully in that time, in that, during that time, we'll have some, you know, have some people that work with us to get these things, you know, just maintained. And again, a lot of it isn't like, there's not a lot of outright repairs that need made. We're trying to avoid that. I keep telling people, we are trying to avoid the repair status. You know, spend the $1,500, $3,000 to do some repointing now, whatever it may be, rather than the $25,000 to replace this wall if it falls down. So we're trying to get people to kind of understand that. This maintenance is not, not that difficult to do, and it's not, it's really, you know, affordable, in my opinion, compared to what the alternative is. So. Was additional questions? I know I only answered one part of that.
Well, so how do we speed up the process? How do we speed up the inspection process? Do you need, I mean?
You know, there's, there's another factor to this, that, you know, we send out letters to ask people for these inspections, and we hope that they respond, you know, in a timely manner, and that doesn't happen. You know, so there'll, there'll be times where we'll send out, you know, we sent out letters in January. We may not ever hear from them, so then we spend time on the phone, calling, 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 wait for that return call. Eventually, it happens, but, you know, it could take, you know, a week to a couple months. So again, some of that comes down to man-hours. If we don't want to, you know, if we don't want to wait for that cooperation, then we go inspection warrant route, which is, will be very lengthy to do. You know, even if we had to do 20 of them, it's going to be very lengthy. So.
So that was, that's another one of my questions. Do you, are you short of manpower in your department? Are you, do you, do you think if we added full-time, part-time, something, do you, is, can we speed this up, improve our situation?
I don't, I don't always care for the part-time option because it's too, you know, there's just more to it than what one person can learn or do in 20 hours. The full-time question is something that Tobias and I have talked about in the past in terms of, we're always too big and too small. There's times when we can use people, and there's times where we don't know if they would always be busy. And we, you know, it's hard to answer that question, you know. Today, it'll be, I'd have a different answer tomorrow, probably. So could I probably find a way? I think we could, but, you know, that's up to you guys for the most part.
Okay. So the current city ordinances, they, are they, are they useful? Do we need to, do they need to be tweaked? Is this something we need to look at?
You know, initially, I kind of, I kind of thought they weren't always necessary, but they have been helpful in the process of going in there and seeing every building.
Right.
So that has been very helpful. As far as having a hammer in this ordinance to do things, I wouldn't say it necessarily exists any more than what we have on our property maintenance codes.
Right.
So it's just a matter of, at this point, interpretation and how we feel about how does it violate code or not, and just applying those codes to each situation. So I think it's probably okay as it sits, but it has been a useful tool, and just letting people know we have the ordinance, we do have to inspect, and so we have gotten cooperative. We haven't had to write a warrant yet. We may be close here in the next couple of weeks, though. So.
So I'm just impatient with it, and I, because I, you know, I look at it, I see it, and, you know, it, for me, it doesn't look like a drip, drip, drip. To me, to me, it looks like a garden hose, and I'd like to have it stop before it gets to be a fire hose. So that's my, and, but I don't work in it every day. So Mike, my, I guess my last question to you, Rob, as far as this goes, is if we did change our ordinance to speed up the process, do you think that that would be beneficial, or do you think that would be harmful? Like, does that put more work on your department, or?
I think it could stress us at times. I mean, because we don't always know how everything else is going to go
Right.
in our department. I don't know how you would necessarily speed it up. I mean, like I said, other than manpower, that would be the only way, where we just dedicated somebody to doing this and essentially getting along with.
Because you still have the notices, and you still have
Yeah.
all of the rights of the property owner.
Right.
I was gonna say, that's assuming, like, nobody fights it in court or anything as well, so.
How patient are you before you file or, or ask for an inspection warrant?
Well, we haven't had to write one yet, and again, some of it is Ry, our office assistant, getting on the phone, just setting up those meetings with people. Went pretty well this year, to be honest with you. Again, I think there's a couple buildings that we'll probably be going to inspect in the next two to four weeks, six weeks. That will probably check, I'll be able to answer that question better in a couple of months. So, because I do believe we'll probably end up writing a, somewhere between two and five in the upcomings.
Well, I, I really don't have anything else, Rob. I guess I would ask the, my remainder of the councilman to kind of look at what, where we're at with this, what he's, what he's gotten done, what he needs to do, how many inspections that, you know, that's, that has occurred and what he has left, our process on this, and, you know, kind of ask yourself- know, kind of ask yourself, gentlemen, if you think that there's a way that we can improve this? And if there is, I think we talk to Tobias and Stan and the city attorney and, and bring the city building inspector back and see if we can expedite it. Because I'd like to see it sped up, but.
You made the comment that it was a little slow getting into some of the properties the first time around. Do you think the second time after they've had their inspection, they find out it's not as bad as they thought, that you'll have a lot better reception the next time to go faster?
I think so. It's funny you bring that up, because I was, we sent out registration, asking people to register, and we've had a much better response than we had in the past, just in the last, in the last two weeks. I hope that's the same case when, when we go to do this again in a couple of years, that, you know, there's, it's like, we're focusing on maintenance. We're not there to, we want to tear your building down. I think there's some perception of that, and that's not, I mean, it's not anybody's goal, you know?
Because I know when I had my inspector, Chet did a great job, but you're kind of apprehensive, oh, what are they going to see? But he was very good.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Rob, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Rob. It wasn't so bad, was it, Rob? It wasn't so bad, was it?
Not so bad.
Okay. I know.
So the next two items, Main Street Quarterly Report and Engage Quarterly Report, will be delayed until our subsequent meeting, due to illness on both of the presenters. But our city administrator is with us, and he's going to give us an update on his monthly report.
Sure. If you've kind of looked through there, what you're noticing is that we're at that time of the year where we have a number of projects that are currently in the design phase or currently out for bid, as we get things ramped up again, as the weather starts to turn nice for us in the spring and summertime period. So that's kind of where we're at now. A number of bid openings coming up in the short, next couple of weeks. Lincoln Street, we have that project. We did the RFQ. We're currently negotiating the agreement with the contractor and hope to bring that back to this body for approval at the next council meeting, so we should be close to having that one done. Another, another thing that's out there that we kind of want to bring to everybody's attention, you'll hear a lot more about here in the near future, is the lead and copper rule. Lead and copper rule, EPA initially adopted it back in nineteen ninety-one, but it underwent by the first major revision here in thirty years, in the last couple of years. And it kind of got hung up through administrations. One started it, and the other one will kind of wait to see if they had a chance to review things, and they finally decided to move forward with the final ruling on everything. But the biggest change in there is it is requiring a public inventory of all lead service lines by January of two thousand twenty-four. So what that means is our water department needs to go out and make an inventory of everybody's lead, or everybody's service line from the meter into their house for all of the roughly six thousand water meters we have in our community. It's no longer good enough for us to say, "Hey, we know there aren't lead in town. We have to go out and look at every one of them." Again, they're private lines from the water tap into your house, so we'll have to contact property owners and ask them, is it made out of lead? Is it made out of galvanized? Is it copper? Is it plastic? Then put that in an inventory, submit that to the federal government, again, by two thousand twenty-four, and then we have to update it annually. And we have to create a plan on how to address any of the lead lines that are out there or galvanized lines that are out there. So we are currently reading through all those rules and regulations, putting together our plan, work on educating everybody and letting them know what's out there and communicating things to everybody. But it's going to require some feedback or some work again with property owners to let us know what they have on their side of the water meter, but that'll be, a process that's coming at her soon.
There's really no definitive answer on who pays the costs.
No, there's not yet. So that's what we're trying to look into as well.
Do we think that there are some out there?
Oh, yeah.
On the city side, we know we don't have any lead on our side of, of things. But are there lead service lines? Yeah, there probably are. And just, again, how old, age of the community and things like that, there probably are some.
Galvanized is considered lead also.
Right.
Wasn't the downtown a lot of lead?
It could have been. I don't know that answer for sure, but, but yes, includes every commercial building also needs to be.
So people, when they do watch this at home, they'll ask themselves, "I have no idea. I'm in that category. How would, how would one check?"
So that'll be some of the educational materials we'll be coming out with, letting you know what to look for, maybe you can differentiate. Plastic's usually pretty easy, people can pick that one. Copper's got a color to it, right? I mean, everybody kind of knows what that one is. It's the other two, a little more difficult. But that's something we're working on putting together, is where to go look in your house, how do you know? And if you still are one of those people like myself that's not a handyman, at the end of the day, go, "I don't know," we'll send a city employee out to come help you, set up an appointment, come look and let you know what you have on, on your side of the lines.
So, could you clarify the statement administration? Like, who's the administration? Because it's not the city that's managed, I mean, if somebody, yeah, somebody's looking at this on, on TV and they think the administration, it's not the city Beatrice administration.
No, it's not city Beatrice administration, trust me. We did not come up with this one. This starts the EPA ruling, it was written under the Trump administration, and they rolled out the rules, and then Biden administration came in, they said, "Wait a minute, we want a chance to read through it," and so they delayed everything for a year, and they finally said, "Yes, we're good with it, move forward with it." And so, that's why. Yeah, Flint, Michigan was a, that was a big emphasis behind it. But that's, yes, you're correct, it's not city administration that came up with this. We are, no, this is a federal mandate that's coming down, that we don't have much choice on.
Gary.
Tobias, is this something that's going to be big enough that we'll have to get some contract people in here to do that, or can we handle it with the water department we've got?
I think we can handle with our water department that we have, obviously. Unfortunately, throughout the course of the year, we end up with some employees on some light duty work, for whatever reason, one or another, and they may be the ones that have to go out and look. So it might be an electric man, it might be a street guy, it might be, you know, a landfill guy, whoever it is, that's on light duty for a while, that picks it up and handles, handles it for a little bit, but I think we could get it done in-house.
Difficult process is going to get into the homes. It'll be the difficult process.
Were you volunteering, Gary, to be trained? I mean, would you? Were you volunteering to be trained on how to do that?
I'm not trainable for that.
Okay.
I'm guessing there's no answer right now, that if somebody wants to refuse to, to supply the information, what, what our role would have to be, since it's a federal mandate.
Right. It's a federal mandate, and to be honest, I started reading the four hundred and nine pages of it today, and I haven't got through it all. So, we'll, we'll see if that's in there exactly. What do you do at that point? Do you just have those individuals who just don't want you to look?
Can it somewhat be narrowed down by age?
Probably. And I would honestly bet that a lot of your local plumbers here probably have some of that knowledge as well, so that might be a place where maybe if somebody doesn't want you to, you might go get another, a way of getting that information. But those are all things we're exploring and trying to get some answers before we roll something out here, and, but we still have more questions than we have answers